Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Wednesday, March 13th, 2024. This is the regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Eddinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kazlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And, Mrs. Eddinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We're going to begin tonight with bright lights, and we're very excited to welcome Mr. James Murray and Joshua Hoffman and students from the STEM Saratoga Middle School to hear about their Future Cities competition.
All right. Well, thanks for that kickoff, Dr. Piasik. And you're exactly right. We have the good fortune of welcoming this wonderful group this evening. We have Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Sonier, who are the coaches. We have Mr. Murray as the principal. And then we have the stars of the show, the team members, who not only won their local competition, qualified through MSOE to head to the national competition in Washington, D.C. last month for the first time in 14 years, which is really quite amazing. So without further ado, I'm going to welcome up Mr. Murray to have him introduce the coaches and you guys as teammates and team members and really celebrate your success. We're very proud.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Seibert, and thank you to the board for having us. Haven't been here in a while. Haven't been to Blair for the board meetings yet. Like Dr. Seibert said, 14 years we've been competing at the school level, the state level, and the national level. And this year, we were blessed to have these, I'd call it, the dream team, who won at MSOE, and then they were invited to DC. And 14 years is a long time to try this and to go at it hard and to finally have a team make it as a dream come true. So I don't want to steal the show. They've got a small presentation. But at this point, I'll introduce Mr. Sonier, Mr. Hoffman, and then the dream team. I'll let them introduce member by member. So thank you for having us.
Well, we'd like to thank you for recognizing us. Like Mr. Murray said, I think it's an accomplishment, not only to the team, but truly understand kind of the scope to which they kind of went through. At Saratoga this last year, we had over 20 teams within our own building competing. We had mentors and coaches from throughout the community. We had five different teachers helping to express the curriculum. And we even had many of you help serve as judges at various points throughout the competition. So not only did these gentlemen have to withstand or excel with at the school level, they also needed to compete at the regional level at MSOE. This involved schools from throughout the state of Wisconsin, and they were nominated as a top-five team, which means that they had the honor of presenting in front of roughly 500 to 600 people, and which, as you can see on the board here now. They were selected as a top-two team, which then allowed us to qualify for the first time for Nationals. Nationals was like, was not like anything else that they'd ever experienced. We had the opportunity to present ourselves to Fox 6 News and to share our story that, for that day, to kind of talk through the vision of what was the journey that these gentlemen had to endure. When we got to the national competition, we were part of a national and actually even international team with representatives from China, Hong Kong, and even Southern Africa, with representatives throughout the state, throughout the United States. They had to present in front of 20 different panels of judges for special awards over a two-and-a-half-hour span of time, answering questions about anything that could be asked about a city 100 years into the future. Not only was this daunting task the first step, the second step was where the team then needed to present to a panel of three different pairs of, three different sets of judges consecutively for an hour and a half, defending their thoughts, their theses, and then enduring over eight minutes of questions at the end of each session, not knowing exactly which question was going to be asked. They are the model of what I hope that will become a regular for us at Saratoga, that they have now paved the way for other students into the future. And not only that, but set a great example for other, hopefully, community partnerships and mentors to help serve within our schools and specifically within our teams to help them guide into the future. So without much further ado, I'd like to introduce our team of James Learman, Finley Hubiak, Connor Paulsrud, Cam Gregor, and Evan Slater. A couple of them have a few words that they would like to share in regards to the experience itself.
Hello. So I am James Learman. And I, on a whim, wrote this, so I'll be looking down at this a lot. Sorry about that. But, um, so, yeah, again, as Mr. Hoffman said, I'm here with my friends, and we're kind of just going to talk about our experience and what a great time it was competing in not only national level competition, but also all the other competitions we had. So it was a great experience for many ways, one that major being academically, because this competition forced us to put a lot more effort into our schoolwork than we normally would to ensure that we would have the best product that we could have and to kind of take us to that point that we wanted to go, which was, ended up being the national competition. And then through this, we were able to expand our knowledge on many subjects in the STEM field, which is really what our school is all about. And these were mainly like the scientific and engineering principles. So these included lots of energy transfers, this entire theme. This year was all about energy, so we learned a lot about the energy transfers, electrical stuff like that, and electrical stuff. We also learned a lot about structural integrity through our buildings, geological processes, and we were located in the Philippines, which is where lots of, there's lots of unique geology there. And then also a lot about the engineering design process, which was a very main part in this project throughout all the years it's been going. We also learned a lot about how to present and answer questions under intense pressure because, as Mr. Hoffman also said, we had to present about many times in front of many different judges for a long time and a lot of questions. And, um, so, yeah. And then also, as you can see there, there's our model. And so that is one of the most important aspects of the project throughout making it. So through making this model, we were forced to like expand our creativity aspects and kind of go beyond what we thought was possible for us. And it didn't end up being the greatest model, but we were very proud of what we were able to accomplish and the creativity that we had through it. And, um, so, yeah, and this was, all of this was necessary to kind of combine to create a good project that, for an underdog team like us, that, again, in 14 years, has never made it to the national competition, to be able to go there and be competitive throughout. And now I think Connor Paulsrud, another member of my team, is going to give some of his thoughts.
Yes. So hello, my name is Connor Paulsrud. I'm an eighth grader at Waukesha STEM Academy. This is my third year participating in Future Cities, and every year I have enjoyed it and have grown a lot from it. Throughout Future Cities, we have learned many things, including how to collaborate with the team, time management, and how to speak under pressure. As my friend James said, this project is a very good way for kids to learn new skills. I have also enjoyed learning more about science, engineering, being creative and innovative, and learning to work as a group. To go to DC and represent our school, district, and state was a dream come true for us. We enjoyed learning new things from different teams across the U.S. and globe. It was really awesome to see the best of the best and to be recognized as one of the 45 teams to make it to Nationals. It was cool to collaborate with different kids from Tennessee and other places who we would never have met without this experience. The event ended with a great award ceremony, and it was awesome to cheer on all those amazing teams. We hope to mentor the next few groups from STEM to hopefully make it back to that stage. This has been an amazing experience, providing lessons, learning, and memories that we will all hopefully carry forward with us. Your support helped make this a reality. We hope a lot of, we know a lot of people helped to make this possible, and we wanted to say thank you to a few of our biggest supporters. Kenneth Dragada, who is our mentor and instrumental to our moving part of this design of the project. Our teachers, Chris Sonier and Joshua Hoffman, for always supporting us and giving us more knowledge. We could not have ever done that without them. All of our friends back at school, who were great to learn with throughout this project. Our parents for supporting us and giving us the time and space out of school to work on this. Our principal, Mr. Murray, for giving us extra time to work on my art project and all of his support. The STEM governing board for their support as well, and to Dr. Seibert and the entire school board, thank you for supporting us and giving us the chance to go to DC. We were proud to represent the School District of Waukesha and the STEM Academy at the national level. Lastly, to my fellow teammates, James, Finley Hubiak, Cam Gregor, and Evan Slater, it has been an honor to work with you guys on this, and I'm so proud of the work we did and the obstacles we overcame. On behalf of me and all my team members, thank you again for all of your support.
I think we might have some comments and questions for you guys, so stay close to the microphone. Mr. Zenobia?
So could all of you just briefly say what you've, I don't know, either learned from this experience or what your main takeaway was working together all this, all these years on this?
So I was actually the only one. This is my first year doing it, but even so, I learned like a lot, especially, as I mentioned, this year's theme was all about like renewable energy sources. So I learned about, a lot about how we can use, instead of using like a lot of the energy sources we use today that are not renewable and are depleting, using a lot of renewable energy sources such as solar power and geothermal and nuclear fusion and many others.
Yes. As James said, we definitely learned a lot about new and renewable energy sources and how we can make our cities of the future better and even our city right now. We learned how to work with a big population of residents, as our city has 1.5 million. And I think really inside of our group, we learned how to collaborate and almost give everyone their own part of the project, to make sure that everyone felt involved. I learned how to work as a team and make sure that everyone has an equal part in building the project. And I also learned basic principles of engineering and how to apply that to our project to make it better and more scientific.
I think something that I definitely learned a lot about was a lot of teamwork, because as it's a team project. While there was time management or actual just general teamwork, we really had to work through a lot of our problems. So I think teamwork was the biggest thing that I think we, as a group, and me personally, I think we grew in.
I learned a lot with the principles of engineering. So a lot of the engineering design process was used and applied to many aspects of the ideas in our city. This was something that I grew in as, before this, I didn't really think, like an engineer, I guess you could say. But after this project, I definitely would say that's one of my biggest takeaways.
Okay. Mr. Wad?
Yes. So first of all, congratulations to all of you. What an, what an honor, and we're all very proud of you, as, as you should be of yourself. I'm just curious, so after all these years of aspiring to get to Nationals and finally getting there, for anyone who wants to answer, what was your takeaway from Nationals that you would bring back next year to future teams that you think will help propel the team back there and, and in your competition when you return?
For me personally, I would say it's just that, like, we can make it, because previously we thought that, I know at least I did, I was not even fully sure that we were going to make it to like that top-five in MSOE, much less Nationals, but just like knowing that it is possible and that we can do it would definitely have expanded what we have done. So for example, if we knew that we were going to make it from the beginning, we probably would have worked a lot harder, just knowing the level of competition that we saw in Nationals was a lot stronger than at our school at district and MSOE. So we would definitely worked a lot harder if we knew that we could have made it, which now that the Future STEM kids know that they can make it, hopefully they are able to work that harder and get there again and maybe do, hopefully do better than us.
Mrs. Koenig?
I don't know if you fellows remember me, but I was one of the judges fortunate enough to sit through one of your presentations. I knew right then and there you were going on because you were so polished. You answered our tough questions pretty eloquently. You worked at such great teamwork, and your presentation skills were phenomenal. So I am not surprised. I'm super excited to, when I heard who was going on. I guess I wasn't surprised, but you guys are top-notch, and it was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was awesome.
Anybody else? Mr. Barowski?
Yes. I think one of the more impressive aspects of this whole thing is just being able to not only oral presentation, but then to be able to stand there and answer questions. You know, sitting at a desk taking a test where you can think about it quietly and maybe come back to a question is one thing, but, you know, do it, you know, on the spot orally. So I'm just curious what you learned from that experience specifically, either about yourself or just about the whole process, if you could share some of that, anybody or a few of you.
Yeah, I feel like we learned a lot about how to like collaborate and, you know, we learned how to almost diverse the questions out. So we all worked on a certain bunch of questions, so then we could give more in-depth answers. So that definitely helped with our answering questions. And I think we all needed to work on like researching and other stuff like that to make it there, and it was good to know everything that we knew for the questions.
I also know that, in the beginning at least for me, I know I definitely grew up like, because I kind of, at least from what I remember, I kind of hogged a lot of the questions. I don't know if you remember that, but, kind of, yeah. But I would definitely answer. So I think definitely working on not just taking the lead on everything and letting back and letting my group maybe take control and knowing that they are able to do that, that definitely was a way that I kind of agree, especially with the questions, because I, you don't know what your group's going to say, but you just have to trust them and know that they're going to say the right thing.
Mrs. Kazlowski?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, congratulations. But for all of us that don't necessarily follow the whole thing, what was your Future City theme? What was your city? What did you do?
So our city was Nuvu Manado, located in the Philippines. And the theme for this year was Electrifying the Future. So we had to figure out new and renewable energy sources and put that into our city and make our city better from that theme. So we kind of created a whole city around that, and we made sure we had enough space and, you know, like resources where we could create our renewable energy sources. So that's part of why we chose to be in the Philippines.
What was your transportation strategy in your city?
Yeah, so we had two different main forms of transportation, one being the Hyperloop, which is more of like a more mass transportation, long distance, so almost like a bus compared to like a car. So the Hyperloop works by, is in a vacuum sealed chamber, which allows it to run without any air assistance, which therefore increases the speed from, instead of having, being on a track, it's almost like a maglev train, but without the air assistance. So it goes, as you can imagine, probably a lot very fast. And then also, we had something called the Y-Axie, which essentially a flying taxi or flying Uber to get between buildings quickly and efficiently. It uses two propellers to fly almost like a helicopter, but being, using two propellers instead of one, it's a lot more sturdy and a lot more stable. And it's, as I mentioned, almost like a flying taxi powered by AI to get residents between building to building, instead of maybe the longer distance that the Hyperloop is used for.
Impressive.
I might age myself when I say it reminds me of the Jetsons, but, very exciting, very well done, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much. We're proud of all of you. Congratulations. Thank you for being here.
What we'd like to do, gentlemen, before you leave, is we'd like to grab a picture with all of you and your coaches and Mr. Murray and, if you'd like to, and President Piasik. So we'll do that quick, and then we'll move on.
All right. Thank you guys so much. We are moving on to our recognition for this evening, and Dr. Seibert's going to kick us off and...
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Tonight, we have the great privilege to recognize our very own Mr. Patrick McCaffery. And Mr. McCaffery has served on our board since 2006, and he's going to end his tenure on the board next month. Patrick, you certainly are one of the board members who helped bring me here to Waukesha, which we all, we all should always be grateful for. And I've certainly appreciated always your positivity, what I would call your unrivaled knowledge of the Waukesha community. You just have an incredible amount of knowledge, being here your whole life, and just really appreciate your commitment to the board and the district these last 18 years.
I'm going to share a few statistics, because I like my statistics. But to begin, as Dr. Seibert mentioned, Mr. McCaffery's been on the board for 18 years, 2006 to 2024. In that time, he was the treasurer of the board for three terms and served on all the committees and then some. Human Resources, Policy, Curriculum and Instruction, Technology, Finance and Facilities, and then Teaching and Learning, Safety and Security, Human Resources and Compensation. And he's been the Chair for Student Services for the last two years. Thank you. He also represented the board as the OPEB rep to the Oversight Committee, which was, I'm sure, a very memorable experience, and the CISA number-one representative. So you've done all the things, and I would just say that it's, it's been a pleasure to work alongside of you, and I've learned a lot from you, in particular, how to leave the votes in the boardroom. And I appreciate the, the knowledge that you have of the district and your willingness to take on tough topics and tough conversations very professionally and objectively. And so it's going to be a loss, but we were afraid you wouldn't let us recognize you next month because we've gotten to know you a little bit, so we thought we better jam this into March. So thank you so much, Patrick.
Actually, I will say one thing. It's been a pleasure to serve on this board with all the people that I have served with over 18 years. I've met and worked with some just fantastically talented people, this board included, this administration. So it, a lot of great memories, a lot of good work, and I know the district's in good hands moving forward, so I appreciate all the hard work that the people here right now do. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda tonight is our report by our student representatives. And tonight, we have Marissa Roddy and Jessica Ortiz from Waukesha North High School to update us on events and activities at Waukesha North. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Roddy again, and I'm a sophomore at Waukesha North.
And then I'm Jessica Ortiz. I'm a senior auctioneer.
Can you guys hit the green, the button on your microphone? There you go.
Let me reintroduce myself again. Hi, I'm, I'm Marissa Roddy. I am a sophomore at Waukesha North.
And then I'm Jessica Ortiz, a senior at Waukesha North. So the Junior College Tour, if you don't know what that is, every year, we like to send us some juniors up to one of four colleges up, up north that some students who don't really have the opportunity to go to can go for an overnight field trip, and they get to go see colleges, see the dorms. It's a fun, like, overnight stay that people do with their friends. We like to shout out to Ms. Warner because she prepares everything, she schedules people, and it's really impressive. She does that every year, and we're all really appreciative to her and thankful for this opportunity. I myself went there last year when I was a junior, and one of the schools that we went to was UW Stout, and then I applied there because I really liked it. I loved that it was a polytechnic school, and I'm going there next fall. That's awesome.
Next up is our volunteering throughout the district. At North, we have many clubs and many activities that extend going into other schools, whether it's connecting within the community and connecting within the district. And I serve the pleasure of being the key club treasurer of Waukesha North, and we have many wonderful events that we do, along with all the other classes. Next up is mentioning our winter musicals and our concerts. I was fortunate to be in the cast of the musical this year and worked alongside with many of, many wonderful people with, who is Ms. Stone, Ms. Schwingle, and Ms. Mo, our choreographer.
And then some concerts at Waukesha North. One of the big ones are the Orchestra Club at the band, who, if you're a fan of classical music, you can go watch. It's really impressive how they all work together. It sounds nice. And my sister's actually in that, and I love going to her concerts. She plays the violin. She's a sophomore though, so she hasn't gotten any of like the solos yet, but she'll get there. You know, it's always fun to watch those. And then every time one of our team, our wrestling team this time, plays third at state, they, we like kind of send them off in the atrium. Sometimes the band, the band plays some music, that's always fun, and then we kind of like wish them good luck, and then, you know, it's, we're like really proud that they play third. It's always nice to see Waukesha North getting some recognition.
Next up is the girls' bowling team. I was able to reach out to some of my friends who went there, and they said it was a really fun experience, although it was a roller coaster win for them, they said. There was a lot of teamwork aspects involved.
All right. The dance team placed top three at state and Nationals. I think this is the second year that they've done that in a row. I did talk to one of my friends, Julia Gettle. She's a senior this year and the team. She told me that it was super fun, that they do this tradition every year where they do like a little scavenger hunt. This year, they went to eat out at Olive Garden, and they stayed at a hotel, which they said they had a lot of team bonding activities, and that's what they really enjoyed about the whole experience besides winning.
Next up is something we're very proud of, which is our college-bound athletes. That include A.J. Curtis for baseball at UW Lacrosse, Jackson Piasik for golf at Hisdale, Liam Robertson for volleyball at UW Stevens Point, Noah Mosley for track and cross country at UW Oshkosh, Ethan Knoll for baseball at Morton College, Ally Bushry for track at UW, UW Lacrosse, and Sky Miller for softball at College of Lake County. Another opportunity that we have to speak about tonight is one of the seniors, Lily Donovan, who had the amazing opportunity to go to New York and sing on behalf of not, not even just our school, but our district and represent all of us. And she said it was a very amazing trip, very exciting. She got to work with so many people that helped her grow, but also show off her ability.
All right. The ACT. So I'm a senior, so I took, I took it last year. My experience doing that, it was, I was pretty nervous doing it because I didn't feel well-prepared. You know, I feel like everyone feels like that at some point. But what I did like is like literally the week before, the teachers all like started, like my Avid teacher, my science teacher, my math teacher all gave us like little quizzes to do and like vocab to help practice. And I think that like, that was really nice of them to do, especially for the kids who weren't in like any ACT classes, to help them prep for that.
Yes. And then as a sophomore and a freshman, we prepped throughout the whole school year during our GIP periods for the pre-ACT, which is coming up in April, actually. And we're actually very, I feel this time, very prepared, knowing that we had these resources to go out there and do it.
Yeah, so two different experiences, but I feel like because it was COVID, a lot of people didn't prepare, knowing that the ACT scores wouldn't matter in applying to colleges, which is something that might have not gone well because their scores were bad. But this year, yeah, I feel like you guys will do way better, more prepared.
Yes. Thank you so much for having us. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
If you can follow us on these and if you have any questions.
I think there might be some questions. Mrs. Voight?
Yeah, I went Thursday night. I was always laughing, like, the hardest one there, I think.
Anybody else? I also saw the musical, and it was wonderful. So you were wonderful.
Thank you.
Just so proud of our music program. Like you mentioned, the band and orchestra and a lot of the concerts that are happening and the sports celebrations. So really proud of what's happening at North High School. Is there anybody else? All right. Well, thank, oh, Mr. Moore. Yeah, thank you.
So thank you both for the wonderful presentation. I know you're a sophomore and you're a senior, but what do you both plan to study? I know you're going to UW Stow to be a Blue Devil. So what do you both plan to take up there? Well, when you get ready to go, you have years to go, but then you...
I want to study hospitality management and tourism. It's, I already work at Olive Garden, actually, and it's pretty fun. I want to explore different, like, careers in that, since I don't know in what area I want to go to, but I definitely want to do something in business and stuff like that.
And as for me, I'm a little indecisive right now, but I would also like to go into hospitality and tourism. But I've been taking a criminal justice class, actually. Shout out to Mr. Horn. And I'm maybe. It's very interesting, so who knows?
Well, ladies, you come to the right place. If you need my help, let me know.
Is this the intersection of criminal justice and tourism and hospitality? Not sure what career path that is, but... Anything else? All right. Well, thank you both so much. Very nice presentation. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is our opportunity for citizens to speak. We have eight speakers tonight. Because there are more than six speakers, each individual will be limited to three minutes. We will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up their comments. As always, we expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium shall be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone. Our first speaker this evening is Marilyn Granger, followed by Paul Reese.
I'm Marilyn Granger. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to start by congratulating Dr. Piasik. She got an award at the Lincoln Dinner this last weekend for her great works. And also, I'd like to congratulate this entire board, because you've been so productive. So you've made a lot of positive changes, and it's very appreciated. So I was watching TV on Sunday night, and there was a program on about school sex education and how it evolved into gender ideology and DEI. Sex education of the past focused on simple anatomy. Today, as parents found out thanks to COVID, the focus was on adult sexual acts for youngsters in first grade on up. Gender was addressed, and the thought that a girl is really a boy and a boy is really a girl was supported. God, who does not make mistakes, or doctors can't tell what sex a baby is, was the garbage handed to young, susceptible children, many confused already as they pass through puberty. Also, if this idea was not supported, not to worry, because the teacher knew your child better than the parent, thus safe spaces. When the board voted for a new policy removing all signs and flags against, except the United States flag, from all classrooms, which included safe space signs on classroom doors, the board stated the schools were safe, starting at the front door, and any bullying would be dealt with right away. Most parents were in complete agreement with the new policies. Teachers pushing this ideology were not, and of course, confused students did not understand. Many came in front of this board, devised their concerns. I really had no idea there were so many gay students in this school, all wearing rainbow-colored clothes and multicolored hair. I thought, what happened? In the program I viewed, it was explained how activist teachers, some gay, are promoting gender ideology along with DEI. This is a Marxist movement, which includes indoctrinating children...
Thirty seconds.
...that was backed by the teachers' union. Our school board won this round, but must continue to stay alert for the ugly head of these ideologies will try to get in again. And some arrears teachers who support this are wearing buttons, promoting safe spaces, DEI, and our gender, and they're supplied by the unions. We must always be vigilant. Our children's future is at stake.
Our next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Stephanie Fidlin.
Last month, we were treated by the head of the teachers' union, Carrie Kumero, come up here and berate this board and demand nearly a 5% raise. Why? Because I guess everyone else is getting one, or so she thinks. It was, I've never argued for a raise in my work, because I'm in the top 7% of something, or because about 93% of the, I make 93% of the guys I work around or do work in my field. I've never had to argue something like that, that, you know, you need to give me a raise, because we've slipped down to 25th place in the teacher salaries in the state. 25th out of what? I thought of immediately right there. So I looked it up. It's 25th out of 421. Wow! How awful of us. How horrible of this district to do such a thing to these teachers. 25th out of 421, which puts us in the top 7%. So you tell me where we're doing academically. Are we closer to the top 7% or the bottom? Why do these two things never coalesce with one another? Now, she stated something that was right. The teachers' union does carry a lot of power and clout, and carries a lot of oats with it. But how do they use it? What do they use it for? Do they protect the kids? Do they have anything to do with education? Absolutely not. They absolutely do not do that. And the biggest evidence I have of that is where there's the left, the far left is pushing for drug legalization in this country. And if you ask any teacher on their own, what's the biggest problem? You know, it's single parent parenthood and drug use that's causing, that stunts education in any school. It's a big problem in any school, anywhere you go. So they could use their power and clout and say, no, we don't want legalization of drugs. It's going to hurt our teachers, and it will. And it will hurt education across this country, and it will. But they keep their mouth shut. Why? Because there's 30 pieces of silver involved in it. They want the payout. They can claim, well, we need better, you know, smaller classrooms for these unruly kids, and we'll just take the payout, and they'll be on drugs, and they won't get anywhere. But other than that, I also wanted to thank you, Mr. Pat McCaffrey. It's been a long time I've been coming here. You have always struck me as something else. I caught myself very early on, when you spoke, leaning in to listen. You weren't, you didn't speak often...
Thirty seconds.
But, boy, when you did, it was something worth listening to. And it was something different than anyone else, and I just caught myself doing it. And Pat would start to speak, and I would naturally stop and lean forward and listen to what he had to say, because it was very true, and it was very full and thought and thought out and well, well-rounded. It wasn't circular and reasoning at all. It was always sought straight through. So thanks for your time and what you did.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Fidlin, followed by Rebecca Schultz.
Violence has no place in our schools. That's not hard to say, and certainly should be the expectation. So why did it take three days of bomb threats at Butler for the superintendent to say that? Families and parents have a right to transparent and timely communication from the district, especially when it involves the safety of their students. As leaders, each of you needs to take responsibility for the divisive culture that you've created, which has threatened the safety of students and staff at Butler. Considering that some of you have been through, what some of you have been through with our district, being thrust into the national spotlight, sparking threats of violence against you personally, I would expect you to publicly condemn this behavior immediately. We can have civil discourse and debate policy, but we cannot normalize threats of violence in our schools and community.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Schultz, followed by Angelique Byrne.
I just have a couple of questions with our upcoming election coming up in April. So President Paziac, I'd like to ask you a question, and then also Anthony Zimboa, just...
Mrs. Schultz, we are not able to dialogue with you. We just have to listen.
Sure, sure. And I won't dialogue. I'd just like to ask my question, and then I'll sit back down. So my question is, what do you see as our district's biggest roadblock in providing all students with what they need? And then, how do you plan to address that? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelique Byrne, followed by Stephen Cogswell.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm coming tonight to talk about communication. I was surprised, as a parent in the district, that this week that I didn't receive communication about the three bomb threats. My child does not go to Butler, but something that large, the two districts nearby that I've worked for would have sent out something district-wide. I think it would help build trust in the community if we heard right from the district and not first on Facebook or on the local news. So I would encourage you to think about that and how we could communicate in a timely manner to everyone. I think there's a pattern of communication that has not gone out, that has created some distrust in the community. When I worked here, I have some friends who have talked a lot about the closure of North, which I know is not happening, but the rumors of that. And some of my friends who work between Butler and North are talking about that. When they talk to parents, they'll say, like, oh, I'm sending my kid to South or West because North is closing. And some of my friends are specialists who work between the two schools. So, and when those conversations are had, my friends say, like, oh, no, it's not closing. And they say, well, I don't believe that, because of the communication around the school closures in the past. So I would just encourage you to think about how some of the timely communication or really transparent communication could help with that trust within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Cogswell, followed by Eric Brooks.
So when it comes to the leadership of people who teach our kids, you can either build trust with parents or you can break it. There's no sitting in the middle where trust just stays the same. As things happen that parents should be notified of, you either build trust by notifying them, or if you hide things from them, you break the trust, and we're going to lose trust with you, no matter who it is. The parental rights resolution actually gives you guys a great opportunity to build that trust, because it gives you an excuse that you're supposed to notify us when things go against our personal beliefs. Along with the combination of a man wearing full drag presenting himself as having female-shaped breasts, driving, substituting on school buses, on different school buses across the district, that combination gave you guys all an opportunity to build trust with parents, and you all severely failed. Not just administration and First Student, but the school board as well. Now, mostly administration and First Student, every leader at First Student, and both our deputy superintendent and superintendent, both fought for an adult employee to be allowed to wear drag on the bus, presenting himself as having female-shaped breasts to children. They both fought against notifying parents, literally fought for hiding it from parents. And the grounds for doing this was that's the bus driver's sexual orientation. Now, there's a couple of different definitions of what sexual orientation actually means. You can take the traditional one, which has to do with LGBT, which has to do with attraction, or you take the gender and queer theory one, which has, which, basically, they put anything they want under orientation. You can decide that this is an orientation, this has to do with sexuality, or this has to do with something I'm attracted to that's not LGBT, but that's an orientation. So now that we're using gender and queer theory to tell parents why it's illegal to notifying them that a man's wearing full drag presenting himself as having female-shaped breasts to elementary school autistic special needs children, let's talk about that for a second. So gender and queer theory, I can't go through most of it, but if you look up the, if you can, you can Google "Godfather of Queer Theory," you get Michael Foucault defended or fought for the eradication of age of consent laws down to infants. Dr. Charles Kinsey, same thing. Godfather of Gender Theory, John Money, same thing. Both abused children and used falsely changing the sex of children and presenting that as if that worked for those children when those children both committed suicide. Gail Rubin, who are thinking sex, same compared pedophilia to a taste for spicy food. Judith Butler, same. I've got to skip through this.
Thirty seconds.
The idea that we're using orientation, and then also, I asked the superintendent, what orientations are you protecting? What orientations are allowed to be expressed to our children without, did you think it's illegal to notify us? And I specifically asked, mask minor attracted persons, and you refuse to answer that, and refuse to answer that again when I bring it back to your attention? That's highly inappropriate. All you, I kept all you guys in the loop with this, too. I don't know why you haven't directed them to notify parents that a man's wearing full drag driving different buses around the district, but that's gender and queer theory. We expect you to stand against gender and queer, gender and queer theory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Brooks, followed by Tariq Akmut.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So I know it's been a challenging week for everybody, especially in the Butler community. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the administration, and especially our local law enforcement, for their handling of the situation. I know it's never an easy situation. It's unfortunate that this happened, but I know they've been very, very diligent in working to keep kids safe. And, you know, I agree, political violence or violence in general in schools has no place, whether it's happening, you know, in Butler, or whether it's threats against board members because people disagree with policy. It has no place in our schools, and families and children deserve to know that they're safe. You know, I've heard folks who've been critical of the district and the department's handling of this. I can tell you, it's, there's no perfect way to do it. Back when I used to work in summer camps, we had a situation at a camp where a parent threatened to come to school with a firearm and threatened to shoot students and counselors. And it's a difficult situation. It's hard to try to keep kids calm while still going through your protocols and making sure that they're safe, and then communicating that situation to parents. But I know people do the best with what they can do, and it, no matter how much training you have, the best thing you can do is be prepared. But when the situation happens, you know, training kind of goes out the window. You just have to act and do what's best for the kids and the families in that situation. It's disappointing that some in the community have used this situation, a very serious situation, as an opportunity to sow more division, especially even when law enforcement has asked people not to amplify these threats. I think it's disappointing, but it is what it is. On a different topic, I just wanted to note, so we found out last week that, or earlier this week, that UW Waukesha would be closing its doors in 2025. And I know we have some students who are taking advantage of our dual enrollment program here who will be affected by this down the road. It sounds like, from what UWM has put out, that they're essentially going to be transitioning these programs over to WCTC. So I just ask that the school district be engaged in those conversations and make sure that they are advocating on behalf of our students as they're going to be affected by this closure or merger, whatever term we want to use for it. But just making sure that our dual enrollment program is able to continue in its capacity, because I think it's a good opportunity for kids. It'll help them not have to spend as much time and money in taking general education courses in college. I know a lot of students who benefited from it personally. So just ask that you guys stay involved in that situation as well. But thank you so much for the time tonight. Appreciate it.
Our last speaker tonight is Tariq Akmut. Our last speaker tonight is Tariq Akmut.
Good evening, members of Board of Education Waukesha. First, I'd like to start out by thanking Patrick McCaffrey for his 18 years of service. Boy, it was a long time, wasn't it? And, you know, I have no, I saw Patrick when he initially started serving on the board here, and the years, and he has gotten better every year. So your departure would be a loss to the board. The other topic I'm going to talk about is what I've done most times. I talk about diversity and why it is important. Many businesses, large and small, do that because it helps them in the marketplace selling their product. They get better employees who work at their different locations. And that is the advantage of diversity and including people, because we all, we all are human beings. Doesn't matter what our orientation is, what our religion is, what the color of our skin is, whether we are disabled or not. We are all human beings. And if we cannot treat fellow human beings with dignity and respect, then we are not acting properly. You know, people sometimes will say, oh, you know, they are like animals. Well, you know what? We shouldn't treat animals bad, okay? And we shouldn't treat our fellow human beings in a bad manner. You know, we all can have differences, but in the end, we can come together and come to reasonable agreement, because it is the art of compromise. When we get set in our positions, that is when we have division, and that does not work to our benefit. So we can all agree to disagree, you know, go out after work, get something to eat or drink, even though during the day we might not agree with each other. And that's how the US Congress used to work before. It doesn't anymore. So when you don't know the person that you deal with well, you get all these divisions. And you keep yourself from achieving, achieving better results in programs. Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. All right, moving into our first action item for tonight, we have minute approval. We have one set of minutes for you from the February 14th regular board meeting. Mrs. Voight.
I move the approval of those minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any questions or changes? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Browski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Next on the agenda is our WEF report. Mr. Browski.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. President. So the Waukesha Education Foundation Board met last week, Thursday, on March 7. And first item up to discuss is the Evening for Education, which is scheduled for April 11, just 29 days away. So it is coming up fast. If you don't know this year's theme, it's denim and diamonds. So we want you to grab your denim and some flair, and we'll see you there. If you're attending, please make sure that you get your guest names, email address, and dinner choice to your table host as soon as possible. Deadline is this Friday, so we'd like you to, we'd like to get that information in by then. Next item is the WEF-held scholarship application window. That will close on March 18, which is on Monday. So it's coming up pretty quickly here. Last, I guess, couple of days and weekend to get those in. Things are going well overall. Deadline is, like I said, on Monday. So one window closes, another one opens. So the grant window is now open, and 2024 grant application window is going to be open from February 12 till April 8. This year, we're offering a record-breaking $55,000 in grants. This is the most that WEF has ever awarded. And special thanks again to Sue Ettinger for her help in running the Casual for a Cause program. As you know, it's been a great, very successful program. It just continues to grow, it seems, over the years. So the success of that program, coupled with several successful fundraisers, and in a great year for WEF's investments, is why our grant program amount is so much higher this year. For a little bit of perspective, in 2004, we gave out four grants for a couple of thousand dollars total. In 2018, we gave out $30,000 to 29 winners, and now we have almost doubled that in just, in just six years. So we're just, we're amazed at the grateful, of all these grateful supporters and donors, and we're pleased that we can make such a huge impact on a district. Next item is golf. So again, with weather in the 60s, some of you might be feeling like golf. Well, hopefully it'll be a lot hotter on August 1, when the golf outing is. So make sure you're saving a date for that. And if you know of anyone who might want to be a sponsor, please contact the WEF office. Lastly, as far as events, is the Partners in Education reception, or the PIE reception, which is happening on June 12. So that might ring a bell. That's also our board meeting. We had a difficult time picking the date, so it's going to be on that same evening. It's just going to be earlier. It's going to start at 4:30. And this is where we get a chance to celebrate our scholarship winners, donors, and sponsors, as well as all the partners in education in the district. So it'll be at Carroll University. It's free. Hopefully you can make it before the board meeting. And speaking of boards, we did welcome Margaret Mulqueen to the board this month. She's a former grant winner, and she teaches at South High School. She's coming on board as our staff liaison, and she'll be serving in an advisory capacity. So just like Dr. Seibert and myself, that means she sits on the board but does not vote. But the role is important, because it gives us some educator perspective as we discuss policies and strategies to serve our community. And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Voight. I would like to echo the amazing, you know, compliment that they've received, that they've achieved to get to the $55,000 level. That's, that's just amazing to go from, like you said, 2004 level to where we are today. And a lot of that is attributed to the, the very successful, you know, program that Sue Ettinger has been running, and the prizes that they give to incentivize getting involved in it, like Dr. Seibert spending a day in the classroom each semester, you know, to be able to encourage people to get involved. So thank you so much for the support, you know, and for, you know, just the whole community that's made that happen.
Yeah, I think I'd like to also add that, I think it's easy to kind of take it for granted that it's just going to go up every year or every other year. And I've been involved with a lot of fundraisers, and I think that's kind of the feeling. But there's no guarantee of that. Doesn't mean it can't go down. I've been the WEF representative just for two years, and it was, I think it was $40,000 two years ago. It hit 50 last year, and now it's 55. And it's just tremendous. So it's nice that it's going to be poured right back into the district, so.
Anyone else? All right. Well, there's a lot ahead of us, so.
Yes, for sure.
For all the hard work. Thank you. All right. We are actually moving on to our consent agenda now. So we'll start with a gifts report by Mr. Clark.
Yeah. Waukesha North High School received two gifts from John Aaron's, $3,500 to be used for the football program, and $1,500 to be used by the Black Student Union.
Thank you. Your agenda this evening includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a moment. There were no expulsions. There were no policies under the consent agenda this month. So are there any other items in the consent agenda that anyone would like to set aside? All right, Mr. Browski, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So earlier this evening, the HME Resource and Compensation Committee approved one resignation, three leases of assets, and two new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Thank you. Not seeing any comment. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Browski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Moving on next to our superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Let me begin tonight with my overnight field trip approval report. Since our last meeting at North High School, they went to the state wrestling tournament in Madison in February, Varsity Cheer National Event for Extreme Spirit and the Wisconsin Dells in March. They'll be going to a softball tournament in Ashwabanon in May. South High School also went to the state wrestling tournament in February. They are going to Esports State in Appleton in May of '24. And they are also taking a music department trip to New York City, band, choir, and orchestra in March of 2025, coinciding with spring break, two days of miss school and then spring break. West High School also went, I just should mention, to state wrestling. We just approved, I approved that earlier, so I didn't approve it in this month, but they also went. They also went to Snowboard State in La Crosse in February, West did. They have the FBLA State Leadership Conference in Green Bay coming up in April. They also have the Jazz Ensemble and Jazz Festival in Eau Claire in April. And lastly, West has the Boys Tennis Invitational in DePere in April of 2024. So lots of exciting trips for our high school students. And then we also learned about a great trip that our Saratoga kids had just earlier tonight. So that was nice, too. Tonight, I also want to speak on the challenges that we've been having at Butler Middle School. And it appears that a staff member's personal social media was targeted on social media. There's a history of this across the country where such activity leads to threats of violence, like we have been experiencing. And there are a number of news articles that describe this phenomenon of bomb threats in schools stemming from social media posts. It's very unfortunate, this is, that this has happened. And as I stated yesterday, in partnership with Lieutenant Pergandy from the Waukesha Police Department, these threats are abhorrent, and there is no tolerance in our district or community for threats to the safety of our students, staff, or schools. These threats have been deemed to not be credible by the Waukesha Police Department, and they appear to originate from overseas. The direct connection to a cellular phone in Nigeria substantiates that. The Waukesha Police Department is continuing to communicate with other law enforcement agencies about the threats as well. They're working with the Southeast Wisconsin Threat Analysis Center, or STACK, which falls under the auspices of the Wisconsin Statewide Intelligence Center, the WSIC. And that is ultimately housed within the Wisconsin Department of Justice, or the DOJ. There is no indication of credible threats to our schools from the Southeast Wisconsin Threat Analysis Center, or STACK, as well. That being said, these threats have posed challenges for students and for families and for our staff. Together with our partners at the Waukesha Police Department, we've increased police presence before school, during lunch recess, and after school. We've increased police patrol in the Butler area as well. The Butler School Resource Officer conducts building sweeps, and we have been vigilant with our school safety plans and protocols. We are committed, and will remain committed, to working collectively with the Police Department to ensure that these ongoing enhanced safety measures for our students and staff at Butler are in place while we weather this storm. So with that being said, I, it is unfortunate that we've been dealing with these. We're doing our best to work with our partners in law enforcement, and we'll continue to do that. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to help you with them.
Anything? I think that was very comprehensive, and I appreciate the background on just the level of the threat assessment and the collaboration with the Police Department.
And I want to certainly recognize Ms. Gennerman, too, for being my partner throughout this. And, you know, we're working together with, with the Police Department.
Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. I think it's important to get this on the record. So our communication of the threats and the establishment of their credibility or lack thereof was driven in collaboration with best practices recommended by our law enforcement agency in Waukesha. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So if there were instances of this information coming forward in the public before the district had a chance to discuss those items, which the Police Department felt comfortable with you communicating, it would have been a result of that information getting to, whether it was the Freeman or somebody on Facebook, without consultation with the Police Department or with the school district in terms of that information getting out?
Yes, that's, that's accurate. I mean, things do get out very quickly these days. Social media, texting, all of those things play a factor. And we do work, Ms. Gennerman and I work directly with the Police Department to write our pieces, and we want to make sure that those pieces are not compromising any investigation that they're doing. And we're also trying to get those out as quickly as we can to, first and foremost, our parents and staff.
Right. And then just one final follow-up. It is my understanding that at least one, if not more, of the threats which were provided by email were actually sent to the Waukesha Freeman at the same time that they were sent to the school district and other targets of the threats, correct?
That's true. Yes. The, there's numerous emails on, on these threats, and the Freeman is included on at least one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Good questions. Anything else? All right. Did you have anything else tonight, Dr. Seibert?
No, that'll conclude it. Thank you, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you so much. All right, we're moving into our committee reports for this evening. Make sure I've got the right order tonight. We are going to start with our Student Services Committee, which will be given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee met on March 5, 2024, and we had three discussion items on the agenda. Our first discussion item is Policy 8420, School Safety. This policy was briefly discussed, and it was noted that it cross-referenced Policy 8310, Public Records, which has yet to be approved. The policy has been updated by NEOLA to reflect the provision of training consistent with the school safety plan and records retention. Policy 8420, the school safety, will be brought back for discussion and potential action once the policy committee has discussed Policy 8310, Public Records. So any questions on that? Okay. Moving on, we had a school safety update. Ms. Gennerman was joined by Kyle McCarthy, Maintenance Manager, and Chad Careview, Custodial Manager, to give an update on the district's work focus on school safety. The district safety team has reviewed board policies and revamped meeting structures to coincide with the required due dates. The team started to use all principal meetings throughout the month to engage principals, secretaries, and custodians in collaborative conversation around safety procedures. Buildings have been enhanced to include location information and signs to easily identify the building location. The team is in the process of auditing and then standardizing the go-bags located in each classroom in the case of an emergency. Principals are engaging in conversations with their evacuation sites and working to identify additional evacuation sites. Employee safety training happens via vector, and the team is currently reviewing relevance and effectiveness with Human Resources. Finally, the team is working with IT to enhance the accessibility of our safety plans. Our goals are to be ready to face future needs and challenges rather than react to the current standards. The district continues to use the "I love you guys" protocols for standard response protocols in collaboration with the Waukesha Police Department. While these updates were shared publicly, not all the information regarding the district emergency response plans can be shared publicly for the safety of our staff and our students. So any questions on student safety, school safety? Seeing none, moving on. Item number three is Student Hope Engagement and Wellness Survey. Jen Gennerman presented the results from the most recent survey of school district students in grades two through 12. The survey, based on the work of Gallup, has been administered in the district since 2018. Ms. Gennerman shared the results of the wellness statement related to our key performance indicator, "Students Respect Others Who Are Different." On this specific question, our recent results show that just under 70% of students agree with the statement, although over 80% of the students' clustered responses were agree or strongly agree in each area, hope, engagement, and wellness. There was discussion regarding the multiple questions in each area and the number of questions selected for the KPI. Rob Bennett, principal at Les Paul Middle School, was invited to speak about his school's efforts in using the Student Hope Engagement and Wellness Survey, results to foster student and staff engagement to develop strategic actions. and staff engagement to develop strategic actions. At Les Paul School, they create small groups of students to introduce the Cardinal Way and use many forms of student recognition. Through the implementation of an advisory period, they strive to build community of students from many backgrounds in elementary schools, focusing on how respect is earned and shown to others. Mr. Bennett shared their student results with many statements on the survey, with 90% or more agree, agree strongly. Seeing the alignment from the district KPI to a school's action, it was the highlight of the report. Any questions on that? It's good stuff. All righty. There will be no Student Services Committee meeting in April. The Student Services Committee will meet again on Tuesday, May 7, at 6:00 PM in the Boardroom. And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Mr. McCaffrey, I think that concludes all of your committee reports until next election cycle.
Yeah, until next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. Borowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So tonight, we have two action items and one discussion item. So the first action item is approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Principal Athletic Director of North High School. And the administration is recommending Eric Plitza White for the position of Assistant Principal Athletic Director of North High School. Mr. Plitza White brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the North team, including extensive experience as an athletic director. Also, he's the current president-elect for the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association. He has a clear vision of what it takes to promote a school athletic and activities program. He's a highly visible leader who understands that getting students involved in athletics and activities creates a positive school culture and increases student achievement. He understands the importance of being present and accessible to make sure the program and schools' needs are being met. He's excited to join during a time of likely conference realignment and sees this as a great opportunity to launch North upward in athletics and activities. Mr. Plitza White received his Bachelor of Arts in Physical Education and his Master of Arts in Education from Winona State University. Additionally, he's received his Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership from Grand Canyon University. Mr. Plitza White is currently the AP/AD at Burlington High School. His prior experience includes Dean of Students, FIED teacher, and basketball coach at Rochester Public Schools. His resume was provided in Board docs, and salary and benefits are according to middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve Mr. Plitza White as Assistant Principal Athletic Director of North High School.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Ms. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0. Thank you.
All right, our second action item, the administration is recommending Karen Knopf for the position of Director of Special Education. Karen Knopf has a wealth of experience in special education, most of those years being right here in the school district of Waukesha. She understands that building relationships helps build trust in the system and plans to do so by being in the buildings, listening to the needs of stakeholders. She's process-oriented and knows the importance of digging into data to find root causes as it relates to special education, over-identification of certain student populations. Her experience coordinating services in Elm Brook, coupled with her systems knowledge of Waukesha, will be a strong asset to the Student Services Team. Karen Knopf received her BA in Communications Disorders from Truman State University, her Master's Degree in Deaf Education from Lewis Clark College, and she completed the Carroll University Certification Programs for Director of Special Education and Pupil Services Certification, as well as her Educational Leadership Principal and Director of Instruction Certification. Mrs. Knopf is currently the Coordinator of Special Education for the Elm Brook School District. She's worked in the school district of Waukesha as Dean of Students, the Coordinator of Elementary Special Education, and a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher. Her resume was provided in Board docs, and salary and benefits are according to middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move that we approve Mrs. Knopf for the position of Director of Special Education.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right, Ms. Ettinger.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0.
Okay, and then we do have one discussion item this evening, which was Special Education Staffing. Sharon Thede updated the HR Committee on Special Education Staffing at the HR Committee Meeting, which is right before the Board Meeting. But because of that, and really, the Board has had no chance of hearing that information, we just thought Mrs. Thede could basically give the same report here to the Board.
Yes, thank you. So early this evening, I discussed the recent additions that we've made to our special ed staff this school year. We have had an increase in special ed numbers in the district, and accordingly, last year, going into this year, we added eight special ed positions, six at the elementary level and two at the secondary level. And then through additional analysis, as the year progressed this year, we ended up adding two more teachers, so totaling 10 additional special education teachers this year, so we can support the needs of our students and our schools.
Any discussion or further discussion?
Anything? Mr. Wad?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Thede. Can you share what our current staffing is for those additional positions? Are they all filled at this time?
All of the added positions, yes, are filled.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thanks. I did speak out on this during the HR Committee, but I think it's warranted. There's a lot of discussion around, both on the state level, the national level, and most certainly in the school district of Waukesha, the need surrounding special ed, the aides, where are we? Oftentimes, when you look at the surface material, we get a lot of, there's turnover, there's holes, there's gaps. And this is truly a situation that as a community that we do face. But I do want to comment on, we are 10 FTEs higher than we were a year ago. Included in that, we have added ours to several of them and our aides into the tune that by doing so, we are increasing and providing benefits to those aides as we start to take a look at a rising population of student needs. The noise that we often hear is sometimes mispointed, and I really want to give credit to both Ms. Gennerman and Ms. Thede on the hard work that we're doing to recognize the need that we have in our specific district, making the decision to add the FTEs, filling them, and supporting our student population and looking at it. These are really great things. These are things that we are not seeing or hearing in the community, but that are happening to make sure that we are meeting every student where they're at. I commend it. I think this is great news, and I encourage the good work as we go. This is a really hard position and roles to fill. They're demanding, we know that. And to see that we've actually been able to grow it, fill them, and add it, I think is very commendable. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Voight, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank, this is a topic I brought up at the last meeting. I appreciate the response because there is that scuttle in the community, and we need to report to let them know that we are trying to meet the needs.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Our next committee is Policy and Government Relations. Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you. We did not meet in March, but we will be meeting in April, April 8, at 6:45 here in the Boardroom. That is a Monday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia. Next is Finance and Facilities, which will be presented by Mr. Wad this evening.
All right, thank you. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday evening, March 11. There were two discussion items and one action item on the agenda in addition to several topics covered in executive session. The action item was approval of 2024-2025 student fees. The committee approved the student fees for the 24-25 school year. The fee schedule is attached in the agenda item in Board docs. There are no increases in the fee schedule from the 2023-24 school year. The committee approved the student fees for the 24-25 school year, and I so move.
A second.
Saw Mrs. Voight's hand first, seconded by Mrs. Voight. Any questions? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, can you take the roll call, please?
David Wad.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0.
All right. The first discussion information items, we had the monthly budget report. Our year-to-date revenue and expenditures are in line with last year's activity. There were no concerns raised or identified by the committee in anticipation of meeting Next was the capital improvement project review. This summer, there will be a significant number of capital improvement projects being completed. The purpose of this discussion was to review the gains the school district of Waukesha has made in updating our facilities. Escher-funded HVAC projects totaling $10 million will be completed this summer. This includes HVAC upgrades at Bethesda, Hillcrest, Lowell, Hawthorne, Prairie, and North High School. The completion of these projects will fully expand the district's Escher funding. Other board projects that were recently completed or will be completed this summer include, one, the replacement of the South High School stadium bleachers; two, the replacement of the North High School tennis courts; three, chiller replacement at West High School; four, roof replacement of the auditorium wing of West High School and Pleasant Hill; five, HVAC upgrades for the South High School fieldhouse and the English History Wing. This includes the addition of cooling to these areas; six, auditorium upgrades at all three high schools; and seven, installation of a new district-wide building security system. The above-listed projects are all being funded with district funds. One of the district's primary focuses when looking at facility improvements has been making our older facilities more accessible to all the members of our school community. This has come in many forms, including, but not limited to, recent improvements that added elevators and lifts to our buildings, accessible seating and ramps at district venues, bathroom upgrades, renovating special education instructional areas, and playground equipment replacements. Through partnerships with school PTOs, the City of Waukesha Park and Recreation Department, and planned district budget allocations, playground equipment upgrades have been completed at six elementary schools, with an additional four scheduled for the summer of 2024. Any questions about the capital improvements project update?
Is there any more?
Is the list not long enough for you?
Seeing none, the next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 8, 2024, at 5:30 PM here in the Boardroom. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. All right, our next committee is the Teaching and Learning Committee, which will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, March 5, 2024. Tonight's agenda includes one action item and five discussion items. We've been really busy, you know, a lot of great things. Action was taken to approve the high school science resources. Over the past several months, the high school science department has been working through the curriculum design process for biology, chemistry, and physics. These three science courses are required for graduation, and currently, there are no district-approved resources. The high school science resources were a discussion item at the Teaching and Learning School Board Committee meetings this past September, prior to beginning the pilot process, and again last month to provide an update and a recommendation. The recommendation resource for high school biology, chemistry, and physics is the Inspire Science Series. This recommendation is based on the data and information provided during the second phase of the curriculum design cycle as presented in the February 2024 meeting. On a vote of 5 to 0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved all three textbooks in the Inspire Science Series for high school biology, chemistry, and physics as presented. The committee requests board approval, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or comments? Mr. Wad, did you have a question? Okay. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0.
Our first discussion item is the K5 Reading Curriculum. Due to the SDW Study of Science-Aligned Literacy Practices Teacher Feedback requirements of ACT 20, I'm sorry, ACT 20, and the efforts to increase the trajectory of student achievement, a comprehensive literacy curriculum review began in fall of 2023. A comprehensive literacy program that explicitly and systematically addresses all nine areas of science-aligned literacy practices includes a focus on the following. Phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, building background knowledge, oral language development, vocabulary building, writing instruction, comprehension instruction, and reading fluency. As a district, we have been making strides in the areas of science-aligned literacy practices with the recent 2021 introduction of benchmark phonics and the 2023 introduction of benchmark writing. Both programs were implemented with a six-year agreement. The district is seeking approval of a comprehensive curricular resource prior to the end of the 23-24 school year, so that implementation may begin in the fall of 2024. On Wednesday, March 6, the district literacy curriculum team held a live workshop to solicit teacher and administrator feedback on multiple comprehensive literacy programs. A recommendation will be made to the Teaching and Learning Committee at an upcoming meeting. Our second discussion item was about government and economic resources, economics resources. High school government and economics courses are seeking a curricular resource to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum similar to the social studies resources that were adopted last year. Government and economics are required semester-long courses for graduation, but there are currently no district-supported resources for either course that would ensure consistency across all schools. Last October, the Teaching and Learning Committee, I'm sorry, Teaching and Learning Team, provided information regarding the potential resources and the pilot process. Last week, members of the social studies team, along with teachers Mr. Carl Millard and Mr. Corey Ross, presented their recommendation for curricular resources for both classes. The team will be bringing the recommendation back for possible action next month.
Mrs. Koenig, can we just see if there's any questions about the literacy piece or any of the social studies resources before you go? I'm actually not seeing any, so please continue. Thank you.
I don't mean to keep rolling through. Our third discussion item was about financial literacy. The purpose of this report that was provided, it provided an update regarding the district's readiness for the Wisconsin Act 60, which was passed on December 7, 2023. This new law was discussed, and the Teaching and Learning Team shared what the district already has in place for financial literacy. The elective course, Personal Financial Planning, has been offered in the district for many years. Excuse me. In accordance with the new law, a standalone financial literacy course will be required for graduation for all students, beginning with the graduating class of 2028. That's next year's incoming freshman class. Over one-third of district graduates currently take the course as an elective. The report shared next steps that the team will engage in to ensure our system is prepared to offer this course to all students.
Discussion on that one. Mr. Moore?
Just to comment, I'm really grateful that this is coming along. This has been talked about, I think, you know, for years, of our students needing to really learn life skills. And, you know, we're just getting started, so I'm excited to see what's yet to come, not only in our district, but, you know, districts across the nation, about, you know, helping kids develop those life skills that they really, really need to do, really need to have in order to succeed as an adult. So I'm excited, so, thank you.
It's exciting. Our fourth discussion item was the Summer School Update. In February, the school board approved the 2024 Summer School Program. The purpose of this month's report was to provide additional information related to the 2024 Summer School Program, specifically related to important dates and times, as well as information regarding get-ahead courses for high school students.